One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye, sorry, I was muted.
Okay. B, Executive Counsel Janet Stevens. Are you ready?
Muted, I think.
Might be on mute.
Good evening, everyone. This is Executive Counsel Janet Stevens.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So it's been a busy first 100 days. And I did get to spend a fair amount of time in Newton when campaigning. And right out of the gate, met Representative Melvin, your select board member, your colleague, over an issue involving a 10-year project and plan, which I'll delve into later. But, you know, as an executive counselor, you know, my top priority is to protect, you know, my constituents and businesses within all 31 towns and cities that I represent. You know, either through the timely review and approval of state contracts, for example, the Department of Transportation, Health and Human Services, constituent work protecting, promoting New Hampshire businesses, infrastructure improvements, and raising awareness of state agency funds available to municipalities. Simply making certain that each and every D3 municipality is receiving its fair share of state and federal grant dollars. So that's one of my ultimate goals, and I'll touch on that later a bit more. But in the first 100 days, I have accomplished quite a bit as an executive counselor. Hearings for six judicial appointments, including Supreme Court Justice Gordon McDonald, serving as a chairperson for the Attorney General hearing. Preparing for two additional hearings for tomorrow, one in Circuit Court Justice and a member of the PUC. To date, I've probably reviewed close to 800 contracts, and I have about another 30 to review this evening. And one thing that I'm really proud of is the extensive constituent casework that I've been doing on behalf of all the residents of not only D3 but in New Hampshire. I jumped into action when I learned of the three-along fire in Raymond. I was able to advocate and obtain CARES funding for 50 displaced residents and a myriad of other services involving state agencies. I worked with SAU-16 families, hundreds, attempting to gain access to their public schools. I've assisted senior citizens navigate the COVID registration platforms. Very proud of making certain that all of my seniors and veterans who are eligible, I was able to work with Health and Human Services to secure their spots. Assisting clients with complex IRS issues. I've been able to involve the Attorney General or certain commissioners when necessary. Advocating for a very fragile, vulnerable business sector in New Hampshire, the childcare industry, which is so critical to addressing our workforce issues and, you know, allowing our country, excuse me, our state to keep growing. And as I mentioned, you know, ramping up for 10-year here, 10-year plan hearings. Most importantly, I'm a fiscal watchdog. I consistently question contracts, yet also the methodology for reaching dispersments. Most recently, $6.2 million in funds were dispersed throughout the state for job skills training for high school students. When I asked why not a single dime was allocated to D3, I was told no one applied. I found it hard to believe, and I'm pursuing answers. When a D3 vendor for cervical and breast cancer did not receive a contract extension, a healthcare facility, I was told there was a mutual parting. And, you know, to that point, I find it quite unacceptable. We cannot leave residents without not only this critical healthcare service, but making certain that they're getting an equal part of what's being dispersed on a state and federal level. So of most importance in Newton, on your 10-year plan, the hearing is scheduled for July. The pre-hearing conference would be the week prior. And a final meeting will follow the release of the report of the commissioner, which is a summation of all of the comments during that period. Some of the big funds that you've received, I've tracked since 1997. Newton has received more than $614,000 from the Oil Disbursement Fund, which is somewhat of a misnomer. It's actually for oil mitigation and cleanup. There are quite a few funds that are out there and available. Through the Department of, excuse me, Environmental Services, we have an Aquatic Resource Mitigation Fund, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund, wastewater state aid grants. There's an abundance, and that's only within DES. I spoke with BEA Commissioner and Gopher Director Taylor Caswell several days ago regarding funds remaining from the $1.2 billion in CARES funding awarded to the state and what to expect with the stimulus program. And, you know, we're still waiting for guidelines. As soon as Congress prints a summary, all expectations begin to develop. But for now, we're still in a holding pattern. There is $25 million in CARES funding set aside in a reserve. Funds are coming back that were underutilized, underappropriated. Those will be accessible for one-offs, unique needs. It's always worth making the ask. So if anything is in need in Newton, you know, please approach me, please contact me. With the America's Rescue Plan, it's a longer horizon to appropriate and use these funds. The date is 12/24, whereas with CARES funding, you know, we had that deadline of, you know, 12/31/20, only to have it extended a year. So with the America's Rescue Plan, as I'm sure you're all well aware, there's $360 billion that is estimated to be delivered nationally to municipalities, cities, and towns. So now is the time to start thinking about some of the needs that you have and how they could be addressed through this plan. The infrastructure within the America's Relief, within the $3 trillion Biden goal, again, and start thinking about needs within your town. And with the America's Rescue Plan, we know these are going to be larger buckets. They're going to be combining childcare and workforce into one, trying to hit multiple agencies. You know, workforce is the great concern within my district. We saw March unemployment numbers this week drop .3%, .3% to 3.0. And every single town and city in my district, with the exception of one, saw a reduction in unemployment in January and February. And by the end of the week, I should have a breakdown of each of the cities and towns. And while we're discussing that, we know that the legislation with the ban on issuance of visas, 10052, has been suspended, and it's going into sunset. Yet there's still a backlog of visa applications and processing. So workforce is a great concern for most of my municipalities. And, you know, one of my top goals, as I've mentioned repeatedly, is making certain that all of my municipalities are getting a fair, you know, piece of the federal state pie. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions?
Counselor Stevens, this is Matt Burrow. How are you?
I'm great, thanks.
I would just, I don't have a specific question. I would just like to thank you for getting on our calendar here. I've been on the board for seven years now, and we've never had an executive counsel come by and give us an update like this. So I appreciate it, and I hope it's a semi-regular appearance.
Absolutely. And Mr. Burrow, have you been getting my executive counsel reports?
Yep, we definitely get the, I think we all get those.
Yeah, we do.
Everyone gets those.
Yep.
And again, you know, I was able to strategize with Gopher, with Taylor Caswell, when we had this catastrophic crisis in Raymond. And, you know, we were able to access CARES funding. I have access to resources, and please call upon me for anything. I've seen small grants for Homeland Security going out to Newton. Think big. If there's anything on an infrastructure level outside of, you know, Rose Corner, you know, the funds are going to be there. So please. And the running joke is that I get calls at 11 o'clock at night from commissioners. I must talk with Unemployment Insurance Commissioner Copatis at least once a day over some complicated cases. And it's not uncommon for him to call me at 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night for updates or, you know, preceding an executive council meeting. And I think a lot of our smaller D3 communities have not been well represented or have not gotten, I think, the funds that they're entitled to, and that's my goal.
Great. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you, Representative, and I look forward to collaborating with you on this Department of Transportation 10-year project and...
Now I know I can call you after 8 o'clock.
Oh. There's a precedent there.
I know. I'll be up late tonight. We have a long day with the executive counsel, got 106 contracts to go over, followed by hearings for a Circuit Court Justice, Beth Kissinger, who is phenomenal, who leads up the special dockets for trusts for the state. She's a dynamo. Following that is the PUC confirmation hearing. So we'll be in the chambers and in hearings all day tomorrow. So I'll be up late, is what I'm saying. So if you need anything, take the call.
Sorry to, first, I, I'm going to second what Matt said. Thank you so much for taking the time. I've gotten multiple emails on Rose Corner. Are you able to give us any information today about it?
Exactly, yes. As I mentioned earlier, the first hearing will be in July. The gentleman that I'm dealing with, a gentleman by the name of Paul Copeland, thought he had a date and he had to change it. So we're in a holding pattern, but we know in July, the week preceding the public hearing, which will be virtual, the three members will meet for pre-conference, you know, rules and regulations and any issues. And once all comments are gathered, Commissioner Sheehan will develop what's called the Report of the Commissioner. And that's basically, you know, proceed. And, but it's a, she's congesting a lot of information and just putting it into a report. And again, Commissioner Sheehan, because of involvement with Route, excuse me, Exit 4A and a big project in Plastow, she and I talk a lot. And she's a resource that is available for you. Just call me. So if there are any questions, you know, my personal email is janetstevens@comcast, not, excuse me, at Comcast.net. You know, they can call me, my home line, 436-1645. So I always respond. But we'll have more, probably within the next week or two, about that definitive July date.
And will, is most of the stuff current online when it comes to Rose Corner?
From what I gather, yes. You know, a lot of deadlines. I don't, I'm not sure how far out Mr. Cottington has gotten. But again, to your point, I will pull Commissioner Sheehan aside tomorrow. If you give me your email address, I will CC you as well, and I can shoot her an email tonight. What's the best email?
Well, you can just send it to the BOSSsecretary@newtonn8.net.
Got it. Will do.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. I wish I could stay on longer, and I wish to see you in person at the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks, guys. Bye now.
Thanks. The next is a request from a resident for a sticker on a commercial vehicle. I'll read his letter. It says, "Good afternoon, Newton Selectmen. My name is Jamie Bazanza. I, my family and I have lived at 25 Walnut Farm, Newton, New Hampshire for 10 years now. Let me start off by saying I really appreciate the work you guys do, and I know it's a thankless job. Without people like you working the system of the government in Newton would not work. So thank you. I own a small manufacturing business in Plasto. My vehicle is registered through the business. It is a regular, everyday pickup truck. That is my only form of transportation. When I first moved here, I was issued a permanent sticker, transfer station sticker. In 2014, I went back to get a new sticker when I purchased a new vehicle, new truck. And I was told I could only get a temporary permit that I would have to renew annually." Didn't make sense to me at the time, as no one could only get a temporary permit that I would only have to renew. Okay, didn't make sense to me at the time, no matter what the vehicle I drove, the trash that is being deposited, or the generation that the Newton residents at Newton taxpasse. But I just took the temporary permit and went on with my daily, knowing Mary Jo doesn't make up the rules. Since that day, I have not renewed my temporary permit because, quite frankly, it's a little bit of a pain and was a bit of a thorn in my side. So for the last six years, I have taken my trash to my work and thrown it in a dumpster I pay for. I am writing today asking for consideration of issuing me a permanent resident transfer station sticker. I am a taxpayer in this town on multiple pieces of property, and I feel I should be treated as such and receive the same benefits as every other full-time resident. I am not looking to dispose of anything other than household trash and recyclables generated at my family and our residents in Newton. I hope you will consider my request. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you very much, Jamie."
So...
Assistant Chair, one second.
Yep.
Have you guys heard anything of getting like phone calls if there was an earthquake in town?
Yeah, so can we, so the...
Just now?
EOC has sent you a text, Larry, I guess. So there is no earthquake in town. Everything is fine, I guess, is what.
Okay. Thank you.
But you never know. There, make sure the insurance for earthquakes is paid. But the, in regards to this, I'll just kind of cut to the chase if I could. I think this gentleman represents a small population in town, but, you know, there's a few people. And I think our goal as a board has always been that that sticker gives you more than just the transfer station. Transfer station is the big one, but you can park in the town beach and Greenie Park and stuff like that. So my suggestion would be for people who are, you know, they're taxpayers, they're residents, they're domiciled here, that we update the policy so that if you can show proof of domicile, and there is a list, basically, that the state legislature has published how to prove domicile, number one is a driver's license. If you can prove domicile, I believe we should be giving, domicile in Newton, we should be giving these folks the full sticker.
I agree.
Yeah, all he has to do is show us his driver's license. We'll take a picture of his driver's license, and then boom.
But there, this is, you know, going forward, you never know, there could be somebody in the transition of the driver's license. So there are other ways to prove domicile. And the town clerks are very familiar with that from voting and stuff like that, so...
So is that for the Policy Committee to do this?
I think what I would do is I'm going to make a motion to engage the Policy Committee to update the transfer station town sticker policy to include the ability to prove domicile in Newton in order to receive the full sticker.
Good thing it's recorded.
I know, exactly.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and can we have, second, but it would be nice if we could have this effective ASAP.
So I will, I will take that as a friendly amendment. I would add, and to update the policy with an effective date of, do we want to call it May 1st?
Well, you have to vote on the policy, so you can't have it before your meeting.
Right, but what I'm, I guess what Kate's saying, and I kind of agree, is to not delay anybody based on the, the policy. So here's what, I'm not accepting that amendment. Let's just vote on that original motion, and we can come back.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 And then I would make another motion, since I, since I think we've accurately polled the board that there is going to be a change to the policy, we just have to put it in writing, I would move to issue this resident a, the appropriate sticker as soon as possible.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the only other thing I'd add to the minutes is if there's somebody else watching right now at home and said, hey, that's me too, I guess we could do a case-by-case basis until we have a policy updated, so...
Okay, moving on.
Who's the Policy Committee again? It's Kate and who else?
Kate and Edvin.
Kate and Edvin. You have your first policy to update. That's cool.
Okay, D, memo, bookkeeper process for expending trust funds. A, invoice, fire department signage.
Want me to read this memo?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. I'll read the memo from Kim Hughes, the bookkeeper, the Board of Selectmen. "The April 20th, 2021 vendor manifest includes the $300,000 payment to the trustees of the trust funds to be deposited into the town building capital reserve fund as approved by the voters on March 9th, warrant Article IV. The trustees of the trust fund will oversee the payment of all related invoices to ensure that the monies are utilized for the purpose agreed upon by the Board of Selectmen as agents to the fund. Kindly advise us, kindly advise as to how the expenditure process shall be administered, more specifically. And question number one, do department heads have authority to order services and/or purchase items without prior board approval, regardless of cost? Is there an approved project list for the town buildings itemized in order of priority? Item number two, if the answer to item number one is no, to whom shall department heads remit invoices for board approval? Town Administrative Board Secretary or Bookkeeper? Item number three, will the board review and authorize all invoices in a public meeting? Item number four, if the final cost exceeds the previous approved dollar amount, will further board review be required? And item number five, once approved by the board, who is responsible for providing the trustees of trust funds?"
The repercussions of... I have it on good authority. Wow. There he is, yeah. He did, but...
Yeah, I did. I got myself.
Right. But yeah.
I didn't hear you.
For every, for whatever reason, in a neighborhood near there, up on a hill, nobody...
We're back. What did we miss?
Did you hear us?
Yes, finally.
We can hear you well.
I'm sure I missed so much.
Yeah, the meeting's done.
Only the good stuff. We've been in a, just so you know, we haven't really been talking for the last five...
Five minutes, yeah.
Six minutes.
Can you hear us well?
All right, sorry about that.
No worries.
Figured out that it was one of the wireless microphones in there.
Oh, wow.
That wasn't even being used, so...
Very exciting.
Okay, so people on Zoom, you should be able to hear us, is that correct? Kate, shake your head. Thank you.
All right. So I was ready to continue.
Yep.
Item number five, once approved by the board, who is responsible for providing the trustees of the trust funds with the invoices? The request for payment and supporting documentation, most invoices have at most a 30-day turnaround, therefore, this process is time-sensitive.
So I would propose a motion. I would move to, so I would move, number one, answer no. So I would move that department heads will not have... So I would move that department heads will not have the authority to order services or purchase items without board approval against this particular trust fund.
Second for discussion? Well, wouldn't they have the authority under our purchase policy anyways, under, as long as it's under $2,500 or $1,500?
Out of their budget, they would.
Out of their budget?
Yeah.
He's talking just about this $300,000 fund.
Yeah.
Capital reserves are different, they're, whoever the agents are, which happens to be the Board of Selectmen, and the trustees of trust funds who hold the funds, manage the funds, need direction from the Board of Selectmen before they take money out for anything.
So would this deal with any time-sensitive stuff, or would the department heads have to wait two weeks to come to us to?
They need to do a requisition, so the board can vote to approve.
So I guess, and I could feel the chief walking up here, I guess what I'm saying is, this $300,000 is for town buildings, and my, you know, wish is that this will last for a long time, five, 10 years maybe, hopefully, I know, I know. But it shouldn't be for time-sensitive things. Hopefully, we, and one of my next motions is to come up with a priority list, and hopefully we have a priority list, we work down the priority list, and if it's time-sensitive, we've done this before, right? The ceiling's leaking, we get together, we can do something about it, but that's, that's my reasoning for the motion, I guess is what I'm saying.
Good evening. I'm sure that was brought because of the fire department. That's why I asked to speak in regards to article four. I probably was the bad guy on it, but I was in a selectmen's meeting that was a three-to-two vote to order an exhaust system. So I ordered the exhaust system. Then I'm told by the chairman not to order the exhaust system because monies had to go back and forth, so I canceled the order.
Wait, wait a minute, so the chairman told you to do something other than what the vote was?
No, the, the vote was.
Three-to-two.
Three-to-two.
For you to do it, and then the chairman, outside of a vote, directed you to do something different?
He told me to hold off and ordering it until, because the money had to be switched back and forth.
Mr. Chair, Charlie?
Yep.
I, I got that from Nancy saying something about the money had to go to the DRA, and he shouldn't be ordering anything at this time, so I just told him to hold off until we get clarification on it.
So I canceled the order. Then it came back to go ahead and order. Then it went back to, the board's gonna discuss it now, their requisitions have to be brought forward. The only things that were ordered was what was discussed during deliberative session and during selectmen's meetings after deliberative session. Sprinkler system, exhaust system, and signage. The board agreed on those three things, so I took it and I started ordering it. My problem is, it has to get figured out hopefully today, because I am not gonna deal, since the sprinkler system is now on my lap, finishing the station. I'm telling you right now, I'm not gonna be the circus clown, calling contractors, telling them you have the green light, then three days later saying, well, hold off, then a week later, yeah, go ahead, then hold off. If that's how the town wants to run their business, then find somebody else to finish the fire station, because this is nuts.
Yeah, so chief, chief, I'm gonna stop you right there, no one's saying that, okay? So there's a motion on the floor, I have a second, and the motion so far is just that they need to go through the Board of Selectmen when we're spending against this account.
But it did, the Board of Selectmen gave the green light. I turned in the, a purchase order.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, not an invoice, forgive me.
Yeah.
And we're having a conversation about it.
Yeah, but this is overall process, not just for you that night, but going forward for everybody.
I, I agree, but I wouldn't spend anything on that, out of that $300,000 until the fire station gets it done, because that's what the Board of Selectmen said in many, many meetings, that the fire station would get done first. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so I, I, and we don't have to argue about this, but we didn't say the fire station would get done, right? What we said was, the health and safety code requirements would get done.
Okay, so out of respect, monies have come out of the fire department budget, monies have come out of grants, when is the town, I know all the monies the same, but when is the fire station gonna get finished?
That's what we're trying to do right now, aren't we? With the, with the report and the inspection?
So it's okay to tell the exhaust guy to go back and stop building an exhaust system?
Yeah, I think you had that vote.
Well, I had the vote before, before I was told to hold, then I was told to go ahead.
This board didn't tell you to hold it. The board didn't tell you to hold it.
Okay.
Right?
Matt, I'm telling you, the town administrator told me to tell him to hold off.
Yeah, but he didn't, she didn't tell you to tell him to hold off forever.
Right, to hold off at that time that he held off.
Exactly, and that's what I'm trying to say to the chief, is we didn't tell you to, we said, it's kind of like depositing money in an account, there wasn't money there yet.
No, I, I understand that, Matt. Been doing this a long time.
Yeah.
But the Board of Selectmen took a vote, I'm, I was totally against the vote, if you remember, because it turned into, you know what, I was told by the board, go ahead and order. Go ahead and order.
Right.
And then I'm told, hold off and order. Well, the horse is already out of the barn.
Yeah.
And that's happened twice.
Right, but, so what, if, so what the memo, so.
It's not to get contractors to come work for this town.
Right, so if we're reading this memo, right, basically the bookkeeper is telling us the money is there now, so the money's on account.
It will be, but it's not in yet.
The, with a date, I believe she has a date for it, so the, she's basically asking, she is asking how the board wants her to proceed, and that's what this, the current motion on the table is all about.
Which is fine.
So part of the problem that Kim's having is bills are being submitted to her without these Board of Selectmen voting to pay these bills. It's not her decision to decide what to pay and what not to pay. She looks for the motion in the minutes to have direction from the board.
Right.
And that's where I'm lost, without due respect. I'll go to the most recent, Ryan Higgins stood at this podium.
Yeah, going forward is what we're, we're talking about going forward, Kim needs to know how to proceed, is, all this is about going forward, not what happened two weeks ago, whatever.
I understand that.
I don't think so, because we keep coming back to it.
In my opinion, no disrespect, this should have been done before the department head had the authorization to go order it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I'm the one calling the guy, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no.
Yep.
It, it's not the five of yous, I'm the one that's looking like a fool, and we're starting to get a little tired of being the one looking like a fool.
Yeah, so we should have done it before, but Kim is bringing this to our attention, that this is different than another budget that she would remit these to, this is a trust fund, so.
We technically spent the money before we had it.
Which I don't think that harms us in spending it now, but at the time, we, at the time, we shouldn't have done that.
Right, at the time, well, we could have made the motion, but don't do it until.
Exactly.
Until the money gets placed in that account, and that's what we did, is we sent the paperwork over and the money wasn't there. That I can understand, because I know it's in the manifest today, that $300,000. So, so going forward, chief, have you, are we audited or aren't we audited?
I'm confused, I honestly don't remember, because I know I ordered it twice and canceled it twice, I don't know, honestly, I don't know where I am now, I know sign has been canceled. Sign has been canceled, so I honestly don't know where we're standing on the exhaust system. I've been a yoyo, I apologize, I'll take a heat bar, because I don't remember what's up and what's down. One person says one thing, one person says another.
Can he go to the mic, please?
They can't hear.
I can't get over that voice in my ear.
What I said was, I honestly don't know. I know the sign has been canceled, I'm done with the sign. The board can order the sign, I'll give you this stuff, you guys can call the vendor, I'm done with that. I honestly don't know the exhaust system, because it was ordered, canceled, ordered, canceled, I don't know where it stands now. I, I have, I have no idea. I have no idea, because that's got to be custom-built, so I have no idea.
So what we can do tonight is give you, what's, we can give you direction going forward.
That's fine.
Yeah. So I still have a motion out there.
And you make a motion as well to allow the purchase of that?
Well, let's, yeah, there's, there's gonna be a couple of motions here, I think.
Okay.
So can I ask a question on this motion? What's the motion again?
So hopefully I remember too. So I believe what I did is I moved to instruct the, the bookkeeper that department heads do not have the authority to spend against this trust fund without prior board approval.
So it should be any trust fund?
Well, it's, no, my, my motion, just, I don't want to solve every problem tonight, my motion is against this one, the specific, and I don't have the name in front of me.
It's the town building fund.
The town building trust fund, capital reserve fund.
Do you second that?
I did, yeah.
You did, yeah.
Any more questions? Okay, we take a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
All right, so to follow that, because she has a question, two.
Three.
Department, I would move that any department head who wants to spend against this trust fund should remit invoices for board approval through the town administrator.
In the form of a requisition?
Yeah, yeah, that's how you would normally get it, right?
Yes, you should.
Add that to the motion.
I would recommend that you do a requisition if it's coming, if, if it's gonna come out of a trust fund, that way the, the trustees have something in writing.
They have your signatures on the requisition approval.
Let me clean up that motion, but the, I would move that all requisitions from department heads to, to be remitted against this trust fund should go through the town administrator for board approval.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Larry?
Charlie, what was that motion again?
Yeah, read the motion again, he said.
Okay, so, let's see, was I move that all requisitions from department heads to be remitted against this trust fund should go through the town administrator for board approval?
So you're saying the town administrator will approve it, not the Board of Selectmen?
No.
No.
Board approval.
It's gonna go to the town administrator, and then it's gonna come to us, and we're gonna okay it.
It goes to me and then goes to Kim, so she can make sure everything's there, and then it goes to the board.
Right.
Yep.
Which is.
That's fine.
Yeah, this isn't any different than a lot of things.
Right, it's the way we do with all the others.
I'm good.
Okay, aye.
Okay, I'm an aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're ayes.
Okay.
And then I think three, she asked, will the board review and authorize all invoices in a public meeting? I think.
We do.
I think we made that clear from that motion, do, does everybody agree with that?
And it's in your, it'd be in your manifest anyways.
If the final cost exceeds the previously approved dollar amount, will further board review be required? I would think we do that with others, do we not?
Well, what she's suggested too is maybe you can say not to exceed, so if it does go up a little bit, it's not gonna go up more than you're willing to spend.
That's what I would do.
And we've done that before.
And then I think five was, once approved by the board, who is responsible for providing the trustees of the trust funds with the invoices? I mean, we do this already with the other trust funds.
I do that, so I can, I can still do that.
So there's a process in place.
Right.
So, so I think that answers the.
She's covered all of it.
Yeah, the bookkeeper's questions.
So basically, what needs to happen is you just need to plan ahead, so if you know you're gonna order an exhaust system.
Yep.
You get, you get all the parts and pieces, get the quote, whatever you need, you get it to Nancy, Nancy gets it to the board for approval, and we move forward with it from there.
On the next mailing.
Exactly.
But since we already approved the exhaust system.
That was an example, that was a bad example, I admit.
Okay.
So, I mean, the, the only other thing I would add to this is, what I'd like to see us do is, at the end of last year, we did a priority list, and since then, we've had other chips fall into place. I think we should revisit the priority list, because to me, the priorities on the list are code and health and safety.
Yep.
Right? And then probably, probably somewhere around three would be things that are gonna cost us more money if we wait on them, right? But I believe there are other opportunities in other town buildings for code and health and safety, or not opportunities, but other code, code and health and safety issues in other town buildings, which should be addressed on a priority list.
Well, we need to finish the fire station, I think that's kind of what the public wants, and I think we don't.
Right, but I would put it this way, I think we've been telling people for a long time, we gotta do the, the sprinkler system has to be done before we spend any other money. The exhaust system has been added to that list, so if we're going to do anything else, we need to wait for those things to be done. So, you know, the chief brought up the example of a sign, if we get a sign, let's get it down the road, let's wait to see what the final bill is for the sprinkler system and the exhaust system. If we have a priority list, that can help feed the, like you guys are talking about, so there's no surprises when the requisitions come in.
Well, the sign was part of the completion of the fire station, so I think we just need to finish the fire station, I think that's the main goal here.
I think what I'm saying is, I wanna address code and health and safety concerns in other buildings before I buy a sign.
But we need to complete the fire department, that's what I'm just saying, the fire station needs to be done, it's a town building, so we can move on.
I don't think, I think when we advertise in this, I don't even want to go down this road, but the fire, there's a lot we could do at the fire station, but health and safety and code requirements, I think, are precedent.
It's triage, we're getting the exhaust, which is great, the sprinkler, it's not saying we're not gonna put money towards the fire station, but we have to look at it like a triage situation and make sure there's some, not some other emergency, because it is town building capital reserve that will cost us more down the line, doesn't mean there's not gonna be a sign.
And, and that's what.
It's not gonna be a sign soon, it just means we have to do a look-see and see if there's anything through the cracks that we're missing.
And that's what priority means, priority means we're not, doesn't mean we're not gonna do it, it just means we have a, an order in which to do things.
Yeah, it's like an ER, it's like, well, someone's bleeding out over there, but we need a sign, no, let's just check, put a tourniquet on the first, you know?
But, so, I mean, it sounds like the chief needs a new motion for the exhaust system, right?
I think your motion still carries.
I think it does.
So I don't think he needs one, I think he can move forward after tonight and actually order it.
Whatever date that was, March 16th or something like that.
That's, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
If it, if I didn't, for the third time, order it. If I order it and you get a bill tomorrow for $50,000, the bill's gonna get paid.
Correct.
Okay, so I have the.
But the money will be there tomorrow.
I have the permission on record.
Yeah.
To order it, number three. Okay.
And last time, hopefully. And last time, hopefully.
So the other thing under D was the invoice for the signage. And I guess you took that back, correct?
No.
I thought that's what you just said. You just canceled the signage?
No, this, what was discussed was two sets of signs. One that said Newton Fire and Rescue, one that went over the doors that designate the doors. What you have is the one that designates the door. You don't want to take it out of that money, that's fine. Take it out of the building account. You don't want to pay it, let me know. I'll tell the, I'll take it back. Again, it goes back to the yo-yo. I sat in numerous meetings and the board said, you guys want to do three things. So I started working on the three things. So if you guys don't want to pay the bill, that's fine. I'll take the signs back. And then you guys can order signs when you want. It's two parts on the signs. That's the lower half, there's still the upper half. I put a hold on the upper half because what I went through for the lower half, I ain't touching the signs. It's on my building. It's the town of Newton's building. And I can tell you that the excuse that, well, people know it's the red building. We just had somebody there, I think today or yesterday, asking for the police station. Okay, it's on my building. It represents the town of Newton, if that's how town of Newton wants to be represented, that people can't tell the difference between the police station and the fire station? So be it. As you can tell, I'm frustrated.
So this is an active requisition then? You guys have it as a requisition?
We have the invoice.
All we have is an, yes, yes, this is an invoice or quote. No, it is an invoice. The problem with it was that he's telling it to come out of the town building fund. So at this point, that's what you think it's one to come out of. You need to make a motion to pay it out of that fund.
So I have a motion. Motion to approve signage for the fire department in the amount of $1,275, coming from the.
Town building.
Town Buildings Capital Reserves Fund.
Second.
Larry, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'm going to be a nay just because, again, I think we should have a priority list, but.
Well, going forward, we will.
That was on the chief's priority list since 2015.
Yes. Right, but I'm talking about code and health and safety.
Okay, moving forward though, we don't need a motion to say we're going to come up with a priority list, do we?
I think we kind of do because it takes an action by the town administrator to reach out to all the department heads like she did last time.
So I'd say moving forward, we might want to do that.
So is that a motion?
That's, you make the motion.
I would move to ask the town administrator or ask department heads to refresh the priority list. That, when did you send that, in November, December?
I, what we were doing with budgets, I think.
So in other words, refresh that list. So take that same list you got, send it out to the department heads and ask them if they want to update it. Would be my motion.
And does that include prioritizing code and health and safety?
Well, that's what we would, we are the ones who are going to prioritize it. They're going to put the things on the list that they need, that they think they need. And then we would have to prioritize it like we did last time.
Can we ask them to prioritize it too?
We could.
I think that wouldn't be a bad idea, they know.
What'd she say?
She's saying, do we want to ask them to prioritize it? So in other words, if one of the chiefs gives us the list, do they give it 1 through 10 or whatever?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We can.
So I would add that to my motion.
Okay.
So who seconded?
I don't think I have one yet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Katie?
I'm a big aye, but I was muted.
Okay, that five is it. So we're going to go EOC update.
You're after me. Okay, so again, there's not much. You've seen everything on the news, everything that's going on. I've highlighted some of the things that are probably important. In anticipation of municipalities asking lots of questions on our calls, the governor has a reopening task force that is updating their guidances. And one of the things in the universal guidance, which you guys can actually see all of this online, but they are working on additional changes for municipalities as well as events, public places, parades is kind of on their hit list. And they hope to have some more information maybe by the end of this week. But some of the stuff that they did share with us in draft format for municipalities and actually employers in general, keeping in mind cleaning and disinfection and the liability that comes with that, they have changed a couple of things. And again, the universal guidance I gave you guys like a long time ago, there was a lot to it. I'll read what they are changing or deleting. So they're now recommending that as we, more and more people are coming into buildings, municipalities and meetings, that make sure that we're using an EPA-approved disinfectant that will work against the coronavirus. And we have that from the state. Larry gets that on a regular basis. They also have removed the sentence on the universal guidance that says, it originally said, clean and disinfect frequently touch surfaces every two hours. They've removed that now. And now they're adding, again, this is still draft, but I just wanted to share. They've added clean and disinfect high-touch surfaces once a day or more frequently if certain conditions apply, including but not limited to spaces occupied by young children or persons with suspected cases of COVID or occupied by others who may not consistently wear masks, wash hands, or cover coughs and sneezes. So that is what they're adding and took off the every two hours. They also have a whole section in the original universal guidance about restrooms and cleaning and disinfecting. And now what they have changed, I'm not reading it all to you. And maybe if you want me to send it to you guys so that you can see the draft, I will send it to you. But originally on the universal guidance, it said, clean and disinfect bathroom surfaces frequently. Now frequently has been removed. And they're saying at least once a day, including toilets, faucets, countertops, stall doors, handles, and diaper-changing tables. They're reminding us that if, to ensure if there's crowds or we need to limit people lining up for our restroom, which I don't think that's happening right now, allow for social distancing. And obviously, we still have the right to wear masks even though the mandate was lifted on Friday. Individual towns can continue doing that as we move forward. Newton stuff, there's a lot of guidance here, but I don't want to bore you with all of it. I'm just telling you the changes. We've got a webinar call tomorrow at noon. They're going to touch on a lot of this, a lot of questions that are getting asked. So I can fill in more. I guess you'll have to wait two weeks. If it's important, I'll send out something to Larry and he can send it to Diane. And that way you guys get it. As far as Newton-specific and coronavirus, we have 20 active cases in Newton. We've got a total of 363 total cases that we've had in Newton. As far as our school district, we've got seven active cases, 49 recovered cases. And to break that down, we've got four in the high school that are active. 30 have recovered in the high school. We've one active at the middle school with seven recovered. Two active at Memorial School with seven recovered. Zero at Bakers with five recovered. They, there is concerns, obviously, kids went back to school the 19th. So they're going to watch these numbers to see what happens if things change after school vacation. So I'll keep you posted on that or I'll send you an email. And then as far as locally at the EOC, obviously, we're still ordering supplies. Larry's, you know, right up on that, anticipating we're going to need more disinfectants. They're also saying that when we're cleaning at town hall, we should have gloves. And we've got a slew of rubber gloves and we'll keep ordering them as necessary. Make sure if you guys, if any department heads are listening, you need gloves, let us know. And then the EOC in Newton, we've completed two vaccine clinics since your last selectman meeting. So we did one at the Sanborn High School. We did the second dose, was dispatched to all teachers and staff from the Sanborn District. We did over 300 people. And then today, actually, we did Packer Meadows for their second shot. And they were like extremely thankful and reached out in that we brought the medics to them. They were really thankful about that. And that's really it. I'll know more tomorrow. Tomorrow's a big call, a big webinar. So again, important stuff. Larry and I will get it to you or to Diane and she'll get it to you guys.
Thank you very much, Trish.
Thank you, Trish.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I said, thank you. That's good.
F is Fire Rescue Station Update. Kind of did that, didn't we?
Move on to G.
So there's no update?
Not really because nothing's, nothing's happened.
Kate? Nope, nobody put it in the minutes.
No, 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 I understand. This is going to help you for the next meeting. I'll stand up here as the project manager said. Don't need to put it every two weeks. The last time I stood up here and had a conversation, I said nothing was going to happen for several months. So unless code compliance, Shante or myself, you take it off unless you guys want to put it on every week.
We'd like to have you here.
Yes, I'll take it off.
Yeah, Mike said that too.
Yeah, if, if these guys contact Diane and say we have an update, will you add it?
Yeah.
Okay, H. No, no, excuse me. G. Fire chief, clarification on Warren Article IV.
All set, thank you.
That's all set. Okay. Authorizing department heads to make repairs to equipment.
No, you skipped H.
The ISP.
H.
Request for second ISP provider.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I checked. Request for second IP provider for the fire and the police department.
So this is mine. So basically what it is, is as you know, they've been having trouble with the vendor, their ISP vendor at the fire station. And our IT people have been working. And as you know, the company's a big company, so trying to get, get things resolved where especially where it's an intermittent problem is difficult. So our IT provider suggested that we might think about getting a second ISP provider. So like consolidated is what they recommended, consolidated communications. And I thought, well, if you're going to do it for one, you should do it for the both. That is just a recommendation from them. I mean, they are still working to try and get Comcast to resolve the issue. It's now at the, I guess you want to call it the state level for Comcast to work the issue.
If I may just to touch on it?
You said you weren't going to be involved in it anymore. You said.
I just want to know, through the selectmen, who scheduled Xfinity to be there the past two days? And did it notify the department head?
That would have been the.
I wasn't there yesterday. I received a text from the police chief that there's a tech standing out there waiting for me. With all due respect, whoever has a technician show up to the fire station, have the courtesy to let me know.
That would have been the IT provider. And then again, they don't know when they're coming. That's unfortunate. They just tell us. Did anybody show up 3 o'clock on Saturday?
I have no idea. Nobody's at the fire station.
Yeah. It's.
He said he was scheduled.
Yeah.
They checked with him yesterday after we had a few words. Very nice tech. He said he was scheduled. The fire department was on his schedule. But somebody called the schedule.
That would have been the, not the IT people, but the Comcast.
It would unite for somebody to say something.
Yes, that's the issue, is that Comcast isn't communicating with the IT people as well.
Comcast thinks it's the IT people. The IT people think it's Comcast. For me, it's simple. Get rid of Comcast and just bring consolidated in. If that, if Comcast is the one that's the issue, two techs, past two days, said, did all the tests, did everything? Said it's not us. It's on that side.
Larry, do you know the chair?
Three years.
Larry wants to talk.
Can the chief be more explanatory on what the issue is going on with the IT? Where'd he go?
He's coming back.
Coming. We got to get on my lapel mic.
All right. Since day one, we've had internet issues. Okay? It's been, they said, we said, he said, however you want to do it. The majority of the time was on the wireless side. Okay? So Xfinity came down. And what they did, we're the only person that knew in the world was myself and I believe Trish was there. What they did was they set up one of the computers, one of the laptops on wireless through their modem and their router. That was the only thing that was on Xfinity. Phone lines, network, everybody else's wireless was on the other server, the other individuals. While the other side went down, that wireless stood up that was connected to Xfinity. Okay? Somehow, some way, the board of selectmen, it's wisdom, I'm going to assume it's the board of selectmen, I'll apologize if it wasn't you, decided to up the firewall. Now, the network and everything else is going down. Okay? As, and you received my email. The reason I sent you my email was I was having a good day. We had unfortunately a fatality. EMS is required to report it to the state of New Hampshire. The individual, and it takes him almost about an hour, give or take. He's almost done with his report to the state and it crashed. He just lost all the work that he just put in. So then, and that was the straw. I'm tired of hearing it. He was told, call town hall, I'm done. So now, again, when it crashes and somebody's doing a report, it's coming out of my budget because I just paid him to start the report. Now they got to start it all over. Because if you don't hit the save button, your work is done. We all know that on a computer. That's why I sent the email and says, I'm done. Again, it's your building, it's the town of Newton. You know what? There's a gentleman, I don't know if I can use him. He missed a call. Matter of fact, it was that fatality. He missed it. System didn't go out. It's you guys. It's the call department. It's call the department. I've given my opinion. Get rid of both of them and let's start from scratch.
So it's the wired works, but the wireless doesn't?
Originally, Kate, it was the wireless that wasn't working. But Xfinity's half was working, the other half wasn't working. Now I'm being told by the members, it's the network that's going down. Not, so when the network goes down, you're losing the wireless. I can't do that laptop anymore that was attached to Xfinity because when the new firewall came in, shame on me, when Xfinity, why, they're the ones that set it up. I didn't mark down the password because I thought it was their fault. I thought when it went down, it was going to be them. But that whole entire fire department went down except one computer, one laptop, which is the one that has the I am responding on.
So the pipes coming into the building, in other words, pipes? The lines coming into the building are fine?
They checked it again yesterday and I think the tech was there today checking the work that the guy did yesterday.
So something happens when it gets into the building. Is the, is the police department having a similar problem?
No.
Is it the same?
Nope, they're on two different, they're on two different wires, some two different branches.
Okay, so and the routers been checked, obviously, right? The routers?
The Xfinity, the last, two months ago, when they were here, they changed the modem. I could tell you from the last, when they were here, when the tech was here and he did that laptop thing for us, that was the first time. I thought that all the wireless. I thought that all the wireless, the internet was on Xfinity. According to them, their modem was shut down. That all they had was providing the service into the building, and everything inside the building was the other service. My half is simple. I said it a million times. One says it's the other, the other says it's that one. Get rid of both of them and start from scratch. Because there's got to be an issue. It's been since day one.
So let's save the issue.
Sure, yeah. The, so basically, the request here is, and I realize what you're saying, but they're saying get a second ISP provider, just in case the other one doesn't work, so we have to pay twice?
That makes no sense.
In order to have one hopefully work?
Correct.
Is that essentially what they're saying?
I believe yes.
So, so I think there's only two choices in the town of Newton, right? For internet?
That's correct.
So we have one right now.
You have that same one at the old fire station?
Yeah, right, right.
And there's no one, the board of selectmen can call up a rung to try to get the Comcast done, nothing? That means they won't fix the fire station?
Well, what we should do is Armon needs to come out and look at this. Xfinity coming out 100 times doesn't do anything for us.
Typically consolidated from, because I've asked a lot of people about this, is not always great either. It might work really well. So I think we should definitely make sure you have something that works. I'm just concerned that, get Armon there. Until it's fixed, we should see, is it just 79 right away that we could double just for the first month until it's resolved? And then choose from there or no?
So they haven't, they haven't been out yet?
They have been out several times and have tried, and they say their equipment is fine. The problem, I will, I will tell you again, it is intermittent. It's not broken. So when the problem happens at 2:00 on a Saturday night, there's nobody there. If it happens during the day, it happened this past week. I went over there, and I looked, and by the time I got there, it was resolved. But I also found out that I think the fight, the police department had a problem. So that was something wide, more than just the fire station. Like I said, it's intermittent.
Mr. Chair?
Yep. Go ahead, Larry.
So, well, she just explained to you it was intermittent, but at that 2:00 in the morning, when nobody's there, and somebody in the resident in the house of Newton needs 911, and nobody shows up because that internet went down, or during the day, when it goes down. It's not about losing the internet, it's about not receiving an emergency call that relies on the internet in that building. You're missing the whole story on this.
That's why we're suggesting a second ISP provider.
No, what should be suggested is Armon needs to come out, have the board there, do their whole thing. I mean, this is crazy.
They, Trish?
Do they have reports?
Has been there quite a bit with the EOC, when Armon's been there and Xfinity's been there. Okay? I can tell you that since the new firewall went in, that somebody approved, and they tightened up the security, probably for NASA, because I've said it a million times, we're web-based. A computer gets a virus down there, we pick it up, we throw it in the trash, we get another one. That's made it worse. Because in talking to Armon, if there's a site that we cannot log into, we're supposed to notify them, and they will allow, they would open up the firewall to allow that site. It's a fire station. 2:00 in the morning, we get, I need something for hazmat, and it does, it won't allow me in the firewall. We have an issue. And again, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse. I've been saying it since 2017, people. Read my lips, 2017. We've had this issue. I've heard the same thing since 2017. Diane is 100% correct. It's intermittent. They both say the same thing. It's you, it's him, it's that, it's intermittent, we need to know when it happens. Get rid of both of them and start from scratch before somebody gets hurt. You want to talk about safety? You want to talk about liability? I'm on record since 2017. A brand-new building. Let's be serious here. Get rid of both of them and start from scratch.
Larry to the chair.
Go ahead, Larry.
I want to make the motion that we can disarm the firewall for 30 days to see how that works out. Like the chief said, we don't need the firewall, we're web-based, no matter what we do. And whatever secure website we go on, as far as the state goes, they have their own firewall. So I'd like to get rid of the firewall for at least 30 days to see if we have any problems.
And how long did you want to do that for, Larry?
30 days, you said?
Oh, did?
30 days.
I'll second that.
Any other question? Okay. Katie?
Yeah? Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Larry?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to shut down the firewall.
So, but to kind of answer the chief's, I don't think it was a question as much as it was a suggestion. I think Edvin's suggestion about having a meeting, we need to have some sort of come-to-you-know-what And then if we feel changes need to be made after that, we should do it. Because my only fear, though, is if you unplug all this stuff, and then you find out that it wasn't the problem to begin with, you know? So, not so much the firewall, I think the firewall's an easy suggestion, but if you got rid of both vendors and then found out we're still in the same spot.
Well, don't you think we should shut down the firewall like we...
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Right? Wait a month and see what happens, and then go from there.
But in the meantime, so in those 30 days, you want to do it two weeks from tonight or whatever, we have a sit-down, Edvin's talking about a report. Can they actually give us hard details about what they tried? It's kind of like taking your car to the mechanic, you know a little something about that, and then you find out, they're like, we can't find the problem, then you find out they didn't do something simple that you would have done to check to see. That's all I'm saying. So if we could get more detail in this next 30 days, as well as trying the firewall shutdown thing, so...
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Might want to go like that with the mic.
I don't like to touch the mic. Diane yells when you touch the mic. No, that's okay. I'm sure everyone can hear me, I'm a loudmouth. So I agree with everyone, but Edvin, so that you know, and Diane can verify this, they've all been there at the same time. All the internet, and they try something, this one tries something, they have been doing that. Now, maybe what Selectman Matt is saying is, based on those times when they've got together, get a report from each of them to see what they did. Is that what you're kind of saying?
No.
Okay. That's probably not a bad idea, but I'm going to reiterate what the chief said. This is life-threatening, and what Selectman Foot said, when we can't respond at 2:00 in the morning because the system's down, that's a big deal. And I've got to go on record saying, all the other area departments are not having this problem. They keep calling the chief saying, "What the heck is wrong?" So there has to be a solution. Clearly, the guys that we've got involved can't figure it out. So the 30-days thing is great, like Larry said, reduce that firewall, maybe get the reports, see what they say. But for three years this has been going on, and somebody needs to listen, this is a big deal. And I can say this because I'm there. When I know I've got important webinars, I now do it at home, because I can't trust the internet. In the middle of it, it goes down, and I can't report on anything, I can't ask questions, and I can't report back to you. Which isn't as important as the guys doing their reports, or us receiving the IM responding calls that we can't get when it goes down. Okay?
Is there any way to get consolidated, a temporary fix while we wait, so this, nothing goes through the cracks?
No, I think we try this firewall thing, get a report from everyone involved, and see what happens in the next 30 days.
You happy with that, chief?
All due respect, Mr. Co-Chair, I would have been happy 2017 to get it done. Not in 2021. As you can tell by the call...
You're not happy.
It's a liability issue. It's on the fiber use.
Someone's going to die.
It's on the fiber use. Okay? The chief has told you that members haven't responded because the network's gone down, and e-Dispatch hasn't sent out the page. I've said that enough times. I'm saying it for the record again. It's on use. Do what you want. I gave you my opinion. Get rid of both of them.
I should add one more thing. And Selectman Melvin, you can verify this, the police department also intermittently goes down. And actually, I was talking to Chief Jewett this morning, and he told me about either yesterday or this morning. But not too long ago, a couple weekends ago, it went down in the middle of the weekend, and they needed a tow truck, and they couldn't, they ended up having, I think they called your cell phone, because when the internet went down, they couldn't look at whatever they have to look at to get their numbers. So it's happening in the police, too. Just so that you know.
How soon can consolidated get there? Does anyone, do we have someone that we're in contact with?
Katie, I don't think it's the Wi-Fi. I think it's the, the firewall is too strict.
Okay.
That's why I want to get rid of the firewall for 30 days, and let's just test out the Wi-Fi.
Because I know, like, consolidated is a actual line. I know that they're, I'm pretty sure they're, they advertise by being very wired and secure. So it's some, which happens, sometimes it's some kind of firewall. So the change that the chief's talking about happened once the firewall was put in?
Correct. They increased the firewall.
Yeah. I've seen stuff like that happen, so...
Kate, to answer your question, since the new high-tech NASA firewall's been put in, it's gone, it's worse. It's worse.
That's just so annoying, man.
And if I knew how to take it out, which I was going to start disconnecting, and I was told I better not, because if I disconnect it, the way it is set up now, I will lose phones, internet, keypad, you name it, everything is going in to that network. That's why I haven't pulled the plug yet. Or I would have pulled the plug two and a half years ago. I wouldn't have waited since 2017 for this problem, just the way I am.
I had problems like that with PCs, got to say. Once I did Mac, never again. But, okay. That's a shame. Man.
Moving on?
Moving on. Okay. Authorizing department heads to make repairs to equipment. Who did this one?
I think this is a follow-up, correct?
Yeah.
And I think, I think it was a, the Chief Alcindino request, and then we wanted to ask for Chief Jewett's input, and then we're going to kind of make a final, does this, I'm just going from memory, is this what?
Yeah, that's what it was about. You asked, that was at the March, no, the April 6th, you said it should go on the next agenda? So basically, it seems like to me that if they have it in their budget, they should be able to make the repairs. Without having to stop and ask the board of selectmen if they can fix an engine, engine two or engine one, whatever it is. So I think if you want to do it that, then you should make a motion.
Right, but I think, I think the question wasn't as simplified as that. I think it was a, no, but there was a threshold we were keeping you to? Because if you need to do an oil change or a tune-up on one of these things, you can...
$1,100 for an oil change.
Yeah. But no, what I'm talking about is, you've never been that restricted before, right? We're talking about over a certain dollar item we have to give you clearance on?
Correct. Because in the past, it was better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The board has a policy that anything over $1,500 goes that way. So Diane hit the nail on the head. To service one of those fire trucks, on a good day, it's over $1,500. The money's sitting in my budget, but I have to sit and hit it just right, and possibly wait two months. And if it's July, the board's on vacation, like what happened a couple of years ago, and now I got to wait a month to fix a truck. I still have a truck sitting at Greenwood, because it was two to three weeks for it to be serviced, and it was put on the back burner, because that waited, I think, a week and a half to get permission, when I could have just, if the board authorized it, not on everything, on repairs, if the board authorized it, I could have just sent her an email right there, signed it, go. So Diane hit the nail on the head. Thank you, Diane. Not on everything, just on repairs. Because we still have two more trucks.
So if we do that, do we want to put any sort of a threshold on that, or do we just want to do, it's a repair, it's in the budget, it's good to go?
As long as it's in their budget.
Yeah, as long as it's in their budget.
As long as in the budget.
So, motion to, are we, everybody good?
Yep.
Motion to authorize department heads to make repairs to equipment, as long as the funds are in their budget.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing notices.
So you have two public hearings. The first one was the impact fees. You had decided you wanted to do June 4th or 1st? June 1st?
1st, yeah.
At 7:00 PM. Is that, you wanted to review that to make sure that's what you wanted to do? So if you're good with June 1st, that's fine. I just need to, you wanted to verify that.
I don't have a problem with it.
June 1st is good. Yeah, for impact fees, I'm good with that.
Do we know if planning board voted for the impact fees scheduled, the new schedule?
Do I have it?
Do we know if the planning board voted to approve the impact fees as presented?
I do not know.
Because I thought they were putting it on their next meeting.
So then what?
We need, we need their approval, too.
I think that's why we said June 1st, to give them plenty of time.
Yeah, I remember that now. Yep.
So you're good with June 1st?
Yep.
Okay, so then your next one that you need to look at is to accept the FEMA grant money of $16,852.19.
Correct.
So I need a date and time for that. Life figure, 7:00 PM. But what day do you want to do it?
Can we do it in May, whatever, what's our first one in May?
I don't think you'll have time to put the, what do you call it?
The add in the paper.
The add in the paper? So how about the second one in, how about the second one in May? Because this is typically a short public hearing, right?
Yep. So you could, I mean, that's to put in the Cabbage Town News. If you want to pay a little bit extra, yeah, you could put it into the Lawrence Eagle Tribune.
You don't need to, because it's a given. You're not going to say no.
Is there a deadline for this, Trish, that we...
No, there isn't, but in reference to what Diane's saying, we've got, if you do it for June, if that's what you're suggesting?
No, they were doing it for, the second one in May.
Okay. Because we may have another check by then for, I don't know, maybe another $40,000 that we could, so that we have both amounts on it. But what would be your deadline to know that, if I have to add another one?
So it would have to be like, so let's see, it has to go 14 days. We would want it put out on the 5th, so it would be like next Wednesday.
All right, I'll see if I can find out. Otherwise, we'll have to have two hearings. I'm just trying to save us money.
Yeah. Well, like I said, if you, if you put it in the Eagle Tribune, then we have less, we only have to do the 14 days, which would bring it up to, well, then you'd have up to like May 4th.
That's expensive, though.
It is expensive, yeah.
And we've already spent a lot out of that.
Selectman Beryl said it's, this is going to be a given, it's going to be a quick[1729.68]
It's gonna be a quick one.
But the, you know, I don't, if there's no hard deadlines to accept it, we can do whatever we can by, and Diane can tell you the deadline for the newspaper for the second one in May. And then, worst comes to worst, now we're on to the first one in June.
Yeah.
Is that okay, Selectman Foote? Does that make sense?
Absolutely. That's fine.
Okay.
So you're doing them June 1st? Both of them?
That would give you more time, Trish.
That's what I'd do, June 1st.
Yeah, we can. It only takes five minutes.
Right.
Just, yeah, just make sure they go before the other one.
Yep.
So June 1st for this one. And if you get the next one, so you'll have three public hearings on June 1st.
Yep.
Question.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Light agenda.
Does that hold up, a question, does that hold up the bookkeeper from paying bills before we accept it?
Probably.
Well, we don't have the money, so how can we pay?
Well, we have the money. She's got the money. She's got the $16,000.
Oh, she's got the money, okay.
Yeah, so she has that.
Okay.
And some of it is, some of that, $4,000 of that is supplies that are going to department heads. But that's up to you. I mean, we've got the money.
It's just if you have to advertise it every time, it's costing us money.
Right.
And we didn't budget that much for all the public hearings.
Right.
So it's up to you guys.
Well, the thing is, the way Kim does it, go ahead, Selectman Foote. Go ahead.
Leave it for June 1st, that's fine.
Okay. Because she's already applied it. She debits and credits anyway, because she knows it's coming.
Right.
So I think if June 1st is gonna be fine. It's not gonna follow her up.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. And if we could have a light agenda that night, that would be wonderful. Because we're having all these, yeah. Put that out to the whole town, right? Please, nobody give us anything.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Next is Master Plan, Chapter 9, Community Facilities Needs Updating.
So this is, if you, you probably haven't looked at the master plan for that chapter, but we needed to update all the information that's in there. And I was told that, I think, Matt, you told me that the other, that Annie, the head of the master plan thing, sent it out to the department heads to update their sections? That's what I was, Matt was told. So the one we have to update is the town hall. So I did do a preliminary one. And I can forward that, I do have it here if you want to look at it.
Is it the one on the shared drive?
Yes.
Yeah, I have it right here. So, yeah, basically, I turned in one for the selectmen, and I turned in kind of a vision statement as well. Two weeks ago, we talked about that. But they wanted one for the town hall as well. And then the capital improvement plan for the town hall. So the, I think, Diane, you said you modeled it after the last one, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
So I'm pretty comfortable with it. We're gonna be able to review all this stuff, you know, at some point, so.
So I guess I just need to know if I should submit it to them, to the master steering plan, the master plans, master plan steering committee.
I'd like to read it. I haven't seen the one that's on that drive yet. But then I'd say, yeah. Do you want a new story to town hall, like the old one? It'd be worth looking at.
I know. Well, we could go all day on that one, right?
It's not that long. Do you want me to read it? Is that what you want?
Yes. Would you read it? I think it's, I mean, before I say, send it in, I'd like to hear it.
Okay. It says the town hall, the original conditions, existing conditions, sorry. The original town hall, located on Town Hall Road, suffered a fire in 1888. The building was rebuilt shortly thereafter and continues to house the town administrator's services. The selectmen's office, town clerk, task collector, bookkeeper have their own space. Excuse me. The town administrator and part-time assessor share an office. The treasurer, building department, and health officers are located in the back room behind the kitchen. In the main hall is the full pantry. What was once the stage now holds the cable operating equipment. Behind that is a small conference room and the planning board office. The fire protection alarm was upgraded to be wireless in 2020. A generator was installed that can support the entire building. Air conditioning units were installed in the main hall and cable room. Other improvements to the building included replacing the roof in 1979, installing vinyl siding and insulation in 1981, and repainting the interior and hall floor. No other improvements have been done. Deficiencies. The building is not fully ADA compliant. There is only one entrance exit on both floors that are handicap accessible. The side parking lot is sloped, which makes it difficult for those with a walking disability to enter, exit their vehicle, especially if in a wheelchair. During the winter months, large icicles hang from the roof on the side parking lot. They have been known to fall into the parking area and could cause damage to vehicles as well as injury to visitors. The parking lot is adequate for employees, but not when they are well-attended meetings or when the hall is used for elections. A sprinkler system was installed, but the town never finished the installation. Therefore, the sprinkler heads were removed because it provided a false sense of safety. Visitors must pass through the small kitchen to speak with the treasurer, building department, or health officer. The flooring in the town clerk task collector's office slopes two inches for eight feet near the counter where the staff interacts with the clients. Recommendation. The town should consider building a new town hall that meets the growing needs of the town and is easily accessible to all. There is land behind the town hall that the town might be able to negotiate to purchase from the current owners.
So the only change I would have is, I think, your first sentence under deficiencies. And I'm not gonna read it out loud. You already have. I don't think that is quite a correct classification. Would you agree with that?
Me neither. What should it say instead?
And just so you know, the reason, there's a reason I'm not reading it.
Yeah.
Would you agree with that?
It can be changed.
Yeah. So I would say.
You want it scratched?
I wouldn't scratch it. I would say there are accessibility issues.
Okay.
Within the building.
And what about that sprinkler system? That should be on the list.
Let's not even go there.
But I mean, it says the auditorium is limited in capacity due to lack of a sprinkler. I mean, this is the wish list.
Wasn't that somewhere?
Let's put it on there.
So can I add to, I don't know if I want to call it a deficiency, but it's an issue. And I have said this in our joint loss meetings. That all the people that meet in the conference room, which for the most part, I'm gonna use conservation as the example, or stewardship, or the rec committee, or we now meet in here. However, rec and conservation, all our files are there. In order for us to have our files at a meeting in the middle of a snowstorm or the rain, we have to go out this door, all the way around in the bad weather, go in, get our stuff, and come all the way back. If we ever go back to not having to social distance when we use our actual room, it's a life safety issue. If we ever had a fire near that side of the building, we do not have access to this door. It was different when we had a selectman that had a key, or when I was selectman, I had a key. We could come out. That could be our second means of egress. But it is something that we should put on that wish list. However, we want to categorize it, because it is an issue that should be addressed somehow. Okay?
I thought we addressed it. I thought they gave them access to that, to both doors.
The selectmen have access.
Yeah, but I thought you get, we talked about it, because that's why he got a cash box.
I only did it for the selectmen.
Can we add that? As well as sprinklers?
Well, I mean, I don't think it, yeah. It should just be done.
That's a little something internally. But I think what Trish is talking about, what I was talking about is, we have to classify what it is. It's accessibility issues. And it's an aging building that wasn't built when the, whatever that was, the ADA statute came out, so. But other than that, I have no, I think this looks good.
So am I including what Trish says or not?
It should be a deficiency.
Yeah, I wouldn't go into the details of everything, but you're talking about egress.
Exactly.
Fire egress or emergency egress, I think, is the.
Wouldn't sprinkler come under that, too? If you're looking at fire safety issues to correct them in the building, then you could look into, again, the sprinkler idea?
Yeah. I think that deserves.
If you can't afford to buy new buildings.
I think that deserves the section it has, which is a sprinkler system was installed, but the town never finished the installation.
Yeah, I think that's worth it. I mean, if our town records, it just, it's really to the benefit of everyone in this town that the building's protected for now.
Yeah.
And for the people, the most important thing.
Agreed.
So I would like to see that staying in.
I think my thing is if Diane wants to make these changes and send it around again.
I will. I'll make the changes.
I'm happy with it. I don't think we need to see it again after tonight.
I think you should add the espresso station.
Should have a what? Espresso, where?
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
Where are you gonna put it?
In the new, the new building.
Yeah, right.
We should open up a coffee shop to get some additional revenue.
Oh, God, wouldn't that be nice if Dune had a nice coffee shop?
All right.
But that's another story.
Well said.
I think so.
Okay. Now, license to sell firearms. Okay. This is a license to sell pistols and revolvers. A license was hereby granted to, I'm not gonna say his name right.
Right.
S.C.D.A.T.'s the first name. And U.G.U.Z. is the last name of Newton, Rockingham County. It was at 57 Pond Street, New Hampshire. And this license would be from April 20, 21 to September 1st, 2023. And he has a copy of it in here, and he has a copy of his license from the federal firearms.
So you need a motion to allow him to?
So, motion to allow Mr. Sedat Uguz of 57 Pond Street, Newton, New Hampshire, to sell pistols and revolvers. I think the chief, I'll second for discussion. The chief has a process question.
We're gonna start meeting like this, and I can tell you we will. Does, again, I'm learning. Doesn't that require a code compliance inspection? Because it would be nice for the fire department to know how much black powder is stored in the town of Newton.
So this gentleman went to the planning board.
Don't get me started on the planning board. We'll be up here for days.
I'm just clarifying that I think six.
They all go to the planning board.
Or eight months ago, this gentleman did go to the planning board. So I don't know if that.
He can get onto the list of the individuals that code compliance goes and see after you or planning board approves it and we have issues with. Technically, if that's a commercial, that's gonna be considered commercial. I could be off.
Aren't we just approving?
That requires a life safety inspection.
So I would, I seconded already for discussion, but I would be in favor of tabling this to get those questions answered for a general process question, you know? Because, you know, no offense to our planning board friends, but we've, in things other than gun dealers, we've had questions about who does what, right? So.
I agree with that, so.
I agree, too.
So you're rescinding your motion?
I am rescinding my motion, yes. And tabling this until we get the proper answer.
So can we, can we ask Shanti to send us a memo about how he gets involved and how he engages? Because typically, is it the chicken or the egg? Like, who would, for a normal inspection, do you hear from Shanti, or does he hear from you, or what happens?
In the real world, before the applicant would go in front of the planning board for approval?
Right.
They'd go to the department heads. In Newton, they go to the planning board. Planning board grants them. They put their stipulations on it.
Right.
Nobody, nobody follows it. Technically, the stipulations the planning board probably put was that he had to get all local and state permits.
Right.
Yep.
Which.
We've heard that before, yeah, yeah.
That's the law, though. That's how, that's in the RSA's.
And to him, I can tell you, because I've had this conversation about planning board, that individual thinks he went to the planning board. Planning board granted him. He's got local approval.
Yeah. So really, what we're describing is, and, you know, it's a systemic, it could be a systemic failure, and it's not just a gun dealership. It's just asking the judge of Shanti, specifically for this applicant, what has been done, what needs to be done. To talk to you before we sign off on it. Because this is, this is the only thing that would come to, not the only thing, but a rare thing that would come to us after the planning board, right? Normally, the planning board is like done, and then you're moving on.
And just to have it on the record, it was the July 28th, 2020 meeting. And it was.
Of what, the planning board?
Of the planning board, yeah. Just so we have it.
July 28th?
Yep. July 28th, 2020. I was not there for that meeting, so.
Do you have the planning board's decision?
Yep. So the planning board, just make sure I read it right. The planning board moved to approve the application for the home-based business with the condition that he come back in a year for review. And it was a unanimous vote.
And that was it, right?
That is all I have.
And that's been standard procedures ever since they've given them.
Yeah. The gentleman stated that he had no plans at that time to deal with gunpowder, and his permit excluded it. Neither would he be selling ammo.
But this will, this would be a good exercise for just, you know, future, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll learn more shortly.
Yes. So chief, appreciate you sticking around. We're learning something from you tonight, so. Aren't you happy you stayed? I can see you smiling, too.
Never seen him happier.
Oh, discussion, employees' evaluation status report.
Uh, no, M.
M?
Trish, uh, treasurer's.
Oh, yeah, meeting to interview for treasurer's position. And Diane told me that they'd be here, they could be here on the May 4th meeting.
Great.
So, like.
Two applicants.
Hopefully, the agenda is, can support it.
Need better, we need to get someone in that position.
Yeah, yeah, but that sounds good.
Great.
So, May 4th, you want them, one of them will be Zoom, and the other, I'm not sure yet, but they both are available. Do you want this in non-public or public?
Should be in public.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, Larry.
Yes, Larry.
So, I know we're doing this, these interviews in public, when did the process change? Whenever we did interviews for other candidates for town positions, there was always a non-public.
Well, I don't, I don't ever remember doing any since I've been on the board, but in this case, we're appointing a public official in place of the voters. That's why it has to be done in public.
Okay, that explains it, thank you.
Yeah, if it, if we interviewed a chief or a department head, that's different.
So just clarification, I guess, maybe the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, isn't everybody appointed, or, like, I'm pretty sure I'm appointed in the fire department, correct?
Yes.
But I should have also had a public, that's, I'm just trying to clarify that we're not setting a precedent. I mean, Trish, you might know, have we done this before?
Thank you.
So actually, three times while I was selectman, we had to appoint a treasurer, and it was never done in public, it was an appointed position. Legal at that time said what we were doing was absolutely correct, and that that person served out the rest of the term, and then the following year, they did what everyone else does, they run, it's an elected position, and the voters voted on it. But the three that we appointed was treasurer's positions, and Nancy will probably remember, I don't want to say the names, one died, and we ended up doing it three times in the seven years that I was selectman. And to Edmund's point, that's, that's a great question. Are we setting a new precedent? We, on ZBA, we're talking about a secretary that we're gonna appoint, and so should that be in a public meeting?
She's not an elected official.
It, legal counsel said, if you're appointing, you can't appoint an elected position, it's either elected by the voters, or it's an appointed position. Because the treasurer in this particular case is an appointed position, it does not abs, it does not have to be a public meeting, it should be non-public, for just the selectman, because it's an appointed position. And we've done it before. Now, if we've done it wrong, we did it wrong under legal counsel guidance, just so that you know, three times.
I think, last week, did I see NHMA weighed in for us?
Yep.
I think you shared that.
So I asked NHMA, the selectmen have questions on how to appoint each person to be the treasurer, seeing how ours resigned. We have two possible candidates, they would like to know if they should interview them in public meeting or a non-public under C reputation. They responded, an interview should be done in public session as there is no assertive, ascertainable harm to someone's reputation for being considered for appointed, for appointment to the position of a public official. So unless you're planning to harm their reputation, then you should do it in public, is what it boils down, that's the way I.
If they're appointed, that would be in public, then.
No, but this is a, a public official. Where, where public officials, you're not public officials, so a secretary is not a public official. It's whenever, whenever you're replacing the board's vote for the voter's vote.
How do we need this room?
It's a legal opinion, right? So legal.
I'm your nine o'clock.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, legal opinions are only as good as the legal person you get them from.
Of course, they're very good.
Exact, they're, that's why they call them opinions, and they don't, if they're, if they're judgments from a lawyer, they're called judges, right?
So, do we have a decision?
Thanks. I don't know, I don't know if we need to vote on it. I think we have a date, though.
Well, you need to, I need to at least know, so I know what time to tell them to come in.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's, you need to make a decision, is really what it boils down to.
So it's May 4th?
I'm sorry, I'm going in and.
Yeah.
So, why do you need to tell them what time to come in if it's a public meeting?
Yeah, just put them on the agenda.
Why do you need to tell them what time to come in if it's a public meeting? We're all gonna be here.
We're trying to pick a meeting date.
No, what I'm, no, if it's gonna be non-public, it's a different time than if it's gonna be public. I want to know if it's gonna be public or non-public, so I can tell them what time to be here.
I'm not opposed.
If it's non-public, it's gonna be 6:00. If it's public, it's gonna be 7:00.
Well, we didn't vote, I think is what she said.
Okay, all right, that's my question.
Yeah, so.
It's okay. Bye.
So I would motion to have them come in at 7:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Larry?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
So is it public or non-public? I missed it.
7:00 o'clock, public.
7:00, okay.
It's public. Discussion, employees' evaluation status report.
Matt, I didn't know if you want to speak on this, I, I think we talked about the middle of May, right?
Yeah, I mean, so, so you've already rolled it out, right?
The memo's been out to everybody.
So the memo went out to the department heads that their employee evaluations are due on what date?
June 24th.
June 24th, yep.
So, what I am suggesting, suggesting is the select board get a status at each meeting as to how we're doing against those, so if there's, a department head has 30 employee evaluations to complete, how many have they done towards that date? And then, you know, most importantly, if we go past June 24th, do we have some outstanding? Hopefully, they're all done on the, the end date, but I think Nancy can put together an Excel spreadsheet report for us that we can review at our meetings. We don't have to probably do it at every meeting, but maybe once a month, and we can start looking at that, leading up to the June 24th deadline.
So I have a question, what type of information? Do you want the previous eval when they were done, and the, and then 2021 is when we would fill in the new for this year?
I mean, I, I think what I care about right now is they have a current one, so if, if the current one.
For 2021?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Because I worked on that spreadsheet today, but I wasn't sure if you wanted other information. Okay.
So if that makes sense to everybody.
So are you looking for the second meeting in May to be able to look at the, the report, or?
That sounds good, maybe.
Okay. And do you want it in the meeting, or do you want it just emailed to the board for your review, or?
Yeah, I think probably emailing it to the board before the meeting would be.
And then you can decide if you want it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're all set there. Okay, thank you letter to East Kingston. Dear Selectmen and Fire Department, reference the fire truck. Recently, our town was without an important piece of fire apparatus that is used to protect the town. We reached out to East Kingston, and they were able to loan us a fire truck in our time of need. This loan helped keep the town safe. For all that, we are grateful. On behalf of the town of Newton, and the fire department, and the selectmen, we would like to thank the town of East Kingston for loaning us a fire truck while I was, was being serviced. The only thing I'd like to see on this is the, the fire chief's signature as well.
Sounds good.
Can I just, I want to go home, Mr. Chair.
Well, you can't.
It's very elegant, but somewhere, you should be also thanking the fire chief, because he delivered the truck, he took the truck, he helped us set up the truck.
You're talking about their fire chief?
Their chief, not, not this one.
Right, exactly, well, we thank you every day, right?
Not this one. There should be a little blip in there.
We didn't vote.
He's the one that I reached out to, he's the one that did all the legwork in East Kingston.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion?
No.
Please?
No.
So we add a blip about that, but we only need the chair's signature and the fire chief's signature. That way, we can get it done quicker, we don't have to wait for everybody.
So, do you want to take the letter and fix it the way you want? Is that what you want to do?
Take the letter and fix it the way you want.
But it. I mean, I, I'm just asking, I, you just, all you want to do is just add, I have fire department in there.
Take out selectmen and fire chief, done.
So take out fire department, and change it to fire chief, is that what you want?
No, 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 he wants us to thank Chief Ed Warren, not.
And, and East Kingston, more selectmen.
Okay, so change department to fire chief.
Ed, Ed Warren.
So.
You want him put first, or you want him put?
If you want to shut it, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'll take care of it.
So the last.
I'll take care of it.
But, so, I'm sorry, so I would move to have the chair sign this thank you letter to the East Kingston Selectmen and Fire Department.
As well as, as well as the fire chief.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that.
Second.
I thought it was a good letter.
I think, I think we're all good.
All set?
Call for a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In, in this way, the two of you.
Can we address the letter? Open seal bits for 2021 household hazardous waste day. Do I have them?
Are they there?
I haven't seen anything.
No?
Nope.
Okay, hang on, I'll go get them.
Robbed that guy, I can.
I'll get them.
Yeah, we ain't got nothing.
So while she's doing that, I would like to announce that earlier tonight in the non-public session, of course, has she taken minutes?
I'll take, it's on tape, anyway.
True, yeah. So earlier tonight in the non-public meeting, the board talked about the compensation of fire department members who currently perform duty shifts in the fire department, and there is a flat hourly rate for these, these department members, and what the board voted to do, since it had been a couple of years, we voted three in favor, two abstaining, to increase their hourly compensation by a dollar. So what is the, the final number, I think it was 1540?
1650 for an EMT or firefighter, and 1750 for an EMT slash firefighter.
Okay, so if you could add that to the minutes, so that the bookkeeper has what she needs.
And just for clarification, Chairman Foot and I actually recused ourselves.
Yep.
We did not abstain.
Yep.
Did I say abstain?
Yeah, you did.
I'm sorry. So, yeah, that's, can amend the minutes to say refusal. Mine's open.
Did you get a number?
No, usually Diane puts that.
Taking them under advisement.
Yeah, so we've.
Okay, we're just taking them under advisement?
Yep.
Yeah, and then at the next meeting, we'll have the, so.
What I'm gonna do is have Pete look them over first.
Yeah, good idea.
Make sure everything is in there that needs to be.
I didn't even look at any numbers.
Probably can't figure it out until you do all the calculations, anyway.
Well, that's the thing, is apples to oranges, right?
Right.
We direct these RFPs in such a way to respond with apples to apples, but then they sometimes don't do that.
We also have here from, to the chief, from, from the chief, the board of selectmen is aware that comms, family processes do send.
Well, that one you just needed to sign, I think, right, Nancy?
Yeah, that one we don't need to read, it's just to have the board sign it and give it to the chief.
Make it official.
Any other business?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Just not the manifest?
Manifest. Okay. Sign a manifest dated April 20th, 2021, in the amount of $1,160,476.94, of which $716,000 goes towards the Sanborn Regional School District May payment, and $300,000 goes into a capital reserve town building fund per Warren Article 4.
Almost over here.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, sign the cable manifest, April, dated April 20th, 21, in the amount of $240.02. Do I have a motion?
It'd be nice if you'd tell me who's like second, you know, who made the second, because it's hard to hear.
We can't hear you over here.
I made the second.
Can you talk to all of us?
Yes.
Did you do the first one, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, sign fire and rescue man, vendor manifest dated, dated April 20th, 21, in the amount of $98.36.
Second.
Matt, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sign emergency management revolving fund vendor manifest dated April 20th, 2021, in the amount of $2,260.64. Do I have a second?
Second by Edmund.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sign inspection fee revolving fund vendor, vendor manifest dated April 20th, 21, in the amount of $8,723.08. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, that lasted five minutes. Who's second?
I did.
Matt, thank you.
You can hear me, right?
You're not paying attention, woman.
I am, it's just I want you to say it so other people know who's seconding, second, whatever that word.
Sign police special detail revolving fund vendor manifest dated April 20th, 2021, in the amount of $16,941.36. Do I have a second?
Catherine, second.
Katie, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sign payroll manifest for pay period March 28th through April 10th, 2021, with a pay date of April 15th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second by Edmund.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, requisitions.
Somebody read the rest, or?
Go ahead.
All right. Sign requisition number 2355 for the transfer station, in the amount of $5,658 for polyfilling all tires on case tractor. $5,000 will come from Warren Article 8, and $658 from the transfer station budget.
Seconded, Matt.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sign requisition number 2021-2 for the police department, in the amount of $2,290 garage door replacement fund to come from the engineering and renovation, eight Merrimack Road Fund.
Second.
And I just ask, is the board all in agreement that's where the funds come from?
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
And Matt, I believe, last we checked, $50,000 in that one.
Yes, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sign requisition number 2021-0100 for the fire department, in the amount of $3,560 for installation and programming of three access control keypads, fund to come from general government building improvement line item.
Second.
So what, what was that total at? I think that was 15 something?
I think we had two amounts in that budget, and one was for repairs and one was for improvements.
Yeah. So that's, that's fine, I, I think we had more than enough.
I believe the girls, you budgeted for that?
Yes, that was budgeted.
Oh, it was budgeted?
Yes, we put it in the budget.
It's not out of the trust, the?
No, nope, we had it in there.
Out of the general government budget.
I see the line item.